I call our meeting to order. Can we begin with the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Public audience. You got your phone out. Can you run it for me, kid? Thank you, ma'am. Is this on or do I have to push this?
No, you're good.
You're good.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 1500 Cursed Road. I wrote part of this and part of it, I'm going to go off script maybe. So if I run out of time, just cut me off.
I'll give you 15 seconds, morning.
And I'll start it. I'll take it back up at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure exactly how we got here, but it seems to me that to be so inclusive of everyone, we've managed to completely overlook that in an overreaching attempt to be kind and empathetic, we're completely ignoring and obliterating the values of others. While striving to be so moral, we're forcing principles on others or expecting people to just live with it. For me, sex and sexuality is an incredibly private relationship. For others, it's a deeply religious topic. And in the schools, we're dealing with children, minors, under the age of consent. As a topic, sex and sexual orientation are areas of concern for bullying and harassment, so much so that the board has some very explicit policies around actions leading to disciplinary action, including the use of obscene or profane language or gestures, the possession and/or display of obscenity or pornographic images, pictures or photographs depicting nudity. Conduct prohibited by the board's policy regarding Title IX includes display of sexually suggestive objects or use of sexually suggestive or obscene remarks, invitations, letters, notes, texts, slurs, jokes, pictures, cartoons, transmitting or displaying emails or websites of a sexual nature. The policies define, quote, "prohibited sex acts" for the purpose of the definitions used as nude performance, erotic fondling, sexual excitement, sadomasochistic abuse, masturbation, or sexual intercourse. In written policies for student conduct, include internet usage and even what cannot be in school performances or school newspapers, including vulgar, indecent, or obscene language. But the curriculum contains this content and the library is actually absolutely full of it. So this is where I'm going briefly off script. I had a conversation with some of the board members about not wanting to ban books. I understand the complexity of that. I understand the concept of not wanting to ban something. But this board and the school district is in charge of purchasing the library books, of carefully curating the content in the schools. And from what I can tell, they've handed that off to the American Library Association. So I think the board needs to relook at that in the context of all these other policies and get everything in line.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Now with the public audience, we're going to move on to committee reports and communications. How are you, Sophie?
I'm good. How are you?
Welcome to your board seat.
Thank you. Okay, so the elementary schools began their return to Camp Jewel. We started with Terriffill and Latimer. Everything was successful, ran smoothly. Kids seemed to have a lot of fun. And then moving on to Henry James, they're going to be hosting a youth mental health aid seminar on October 30th and November 6th, which I personally think is really incredible. And then at the high school level, we had a really successful spirit week and the first pep rally in a lot of years. And bleachers were in for the homecoming game, which is really good. There's a choir concert on Thursday, October 12th, and the One Act Play Festival will be on October 21st. And there is also a new chapter of a Historical Honor Society opening, and they will be holding a haunted and historical walking tour on the weekend before Halloween on the 29th.
Fun.
Sophie, make sure they find the One Act Play Festival at?
Yes, at Henry James.
Oh, really?
Yes. Because the Theater Guild needs the space.
Oh, they're using the high school? It's good that we share our space. Can I ask about the mental health clinic? Mr. Baker, do you know about that?
I can actually comment on that, sure. The Farmington Valley Health District is really putting a lot of time and resource into developing their mental health supports. And there is a specific training. It's a seven-hour course. We're breaking it into two evenings of three and a half hours each, and it's youth mental health first aid. So Justine Ginsburg, who is a health outreach coordinator for Farmington Valley Health District, will be providing this for the first 30 parents or guardians. It's actually a message that went out in all listservs on Friday at all of the schools. And the course is around kind of Mental Health Issues 101, how to look for signs and symptoms, what resources are provided for families. This is, I think, a great training. I went through it years ago and again, offered to the first 30 parents that signed up. So if you missed the link, check out your principal's listserv from last Friday and you will see the Google registration there.
Very cool. Great. Thank you. Sharon.
Brian.
Not right now.
Okay.
Jen. I gotta say, I loved the pep rally. I thought it was great. I thought they did a good job. I don't know if everybody's on there, but I thought having a Trojan and having that mascot dude guy coming. I thought that was awesome. I thought it was great. And so I was just saying, who knows, to high school.
The Trojan Law, that whole group has done a great job.
They're fantastic.
My daughter, Brendan Russell, all those guys did a fantastic job.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Did they organize the pep rally?
They did, yeah.
They did.
Really good energy and it's been a long time. It was a cool environment. I mean, the highlight was Ms. Lemke trying to protect the band during dodgeball in high heels. We had the over-under on the other side if we were going to fold an ankle and be out on short-term disability.
Not Mrs. Lemke. She rocks those heels.
She did a very nice job.
She rocks those shoes.
I was joined by multiple members of the math department.
Yeah, it was good.
And business department.
It was fun.
Very cool.
And the homecoming game, the bleachers were awesome. You can't fall through them anymore. So that's always positive.
We like that.
If you drop your phone, it doesn't go all the way down.
We've saved parents of Simsbury thousands of dollars.
I thought it was great.
So did you go to the game, Sophie?
Yeah.
Yeah? And you had a good time? It was good?
They didn't win in the end, but I thought it was good. There was a lot of good energy and people were really positive and it was fun. Brian, over there.
Very cool. How do you follow that up?
I don't know.
Jen's got a lot of energy.
Tired just listening.
Done now.
I don't know what's in there.
It is tea. I hate tea.
I just briefly wanted to say, you mentioned the Honor Society. I just wanted to give a shout out to, there was the National Choral or Choir Honor Society last week, did their performances. Just congratulations to everybody there. Just again, I've said this from time to time, just it is amazing what our arts department in this district is doing and that was further proof of all of that. So congratulations to everybody.
Well, as one parent who did lose a phone through the bleachers, we had a new phone, it lasted more than a week, did go downhill. So I...
You can see the enthusiasm is needed.
Absolutely. So I had the opportunity to attend a fall meeting for the New England Associations of our fellow state associations up in Boston. And it was great because there were probably about 200 of us there and we were able to, you know, talk about beginning of schools, you know, starting in September and about priorities in education, DEI policies that are going on state to state, you know, school boards at the center of polarized community debates in some of the districts and towns and cities, financial trends and legal updates, state and federal. So it was a great way to kind of convene, start the year, to hear what's going on around the other fellow New England states before we convene again in DC. Also, on the federal front, in September, NSBA, we send out alerts and we send out blasts to 92,000 school board members around the country. And in September, the congressional delegations all received over 1,000 blasts from Board of Ed members around the country. We got, and I shared some with you, and some were about protect learning recovery and about supporting the newly introduced bipartisan IDEA Full Funding Act. So that was really great for September, that when Congress was off session, came back into session, was able to receive that from the Board of Education members around the country. And we are full throttle moving along with our CAPE Conference in November. We have over 600 attendees so far. So board members, superintendents, and anyone else associated with education. So we also have the DA, the Delegate Assembly, the day before. So we are fearlessly working on those resolutions that were going to be used for the legislative session starting in January this year. So that's what's moving along very quickly. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Lemke.
All set for now?
Just want to take a moment to congratulate our long-term, longtime SRO, School Resource Officer Todd Cushman, who received a promotion in the department and is going to be promoted to shift sergeant. And he's excited to begin that work. But he's been probably with us about eight, nine years as a SRO and it really made a huge impact. I want to thank the Police Department for including Scott Baker and I in the interviews for his successor. And if you know Officer Mike Lantieri, he is going to be our next SRO. He's been with the department a long time, has raised kids through the Simsbury Public Schools and is very excited to take on this new role. So congratulations to Todd and welcome to Officer Lantieri.
When does that? I was going to say, when does that change take place? So as of today?
And Todd's promotion ceremony is at Henry James tomorrow at 10:30, which is very nice.
Oh, that's very cool. Very cool. Perfect. Mr. Curtis.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
I'm good. Everybody's good tonight. All right, then we're going to move on to recommended actions. Approval of the minutes of the September 26 meeting, please. Can I get a motion there?
I'll move to accept those minutes.
And a second, please?
A second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any absentions? Says it right there on the minutes. All right. Motion carries. Approval of collective bargaining unit agreement.
So this is the collective bargaining agreement with our administrative group. Obviously, a small group, but an important one in that it represents all of our principals, assistant principals, the directors on Sue's Teaching and Learning Team, director of athletics. So our group of administrators in the district. And we had to get at it early this year. The statutes on this one require a fall negotiation. So early in the school year, we started in with the group and were able, I was able to announce a couple of weeks ago at our board meeting that we had reached a tentative agreement. Since that time, the association has ratified the agreement. So now it's up for your vote. And I'll just go through the exhibit here and give you a few highlights. Obviously, we focus mostly on the wage settlement and we do that by comparing in the market and what settlements around the state of Connecticut were. So for this three-year contract, you could see settlements that will increase the salaries at the top of the scale by 3% in the first year and then 2.95%, 2.95%, completely in line with where the local settlements have been coming. So it's an appropriate and fair settlement. One of the fringe benefits for our administrators is that they do have a tax-sheltered annuity. The settlement put a few more dollars annually in the tax-sheltered annuity. In terms of the other most important issues when we negotiate, it's health insurance. It was an important goal for us to have this group take part in the medical management program that we've asked other groups to take part in. So the administrators' group agreed to do that. And we had a very slight increase in their, the premium cost share that they pay. Made some improvement to the dental care to have a little bit of a higher maximum consistent with what we did with the teachers last year and actually increase the amount that annually they can get reimbursed if they attend a professional conference or take a professional course because we sort of had gotten, we had not done anything with that line item in many, many years and it was kind of getting behind the times. So and then some cleanup around some of the positions that have come in and gone since the last time we negotiated this. We've actually been under a four-year contract for the one that is expiring on June 30th. This will be a three-year contract and we think that that's probably a good place to settle. So again, I will say, as I did two weeks ago, the spirit of this negotiation was exceptional and that was very respectful, very businesslike. People knew we were there to, not to squabble, but to get to a fair deal and it was really exceptional. So two of the negotiators, Scott Baker and Campera, are here. So I want to thank them, along with Meg Evans, who helped negotiate on their side and hopefully your affirmative vote and we can say congratulations to the group.
The three-year, that keeps it still off-cycle from the teachers.
Correct. So they will now fall in the year after the teachers do.
Okay.
I just want to give my thanks as well to the team on SAS's side and with Neil for all his work. Mentioned it last week, our last meeting as well. It was really good negotiations and, you know, the conversations, especially after, I had forgotten that it was four years. I mean, you know, it was four years' worth of, you know, updates and changes and things to talk about and the conversations focused on the end result. And it was, I really appreciate all the time that everybody else put in the result. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. All right. Can I get someone to read the motion, please?
You do that. I'll move that the Board of Education ratify the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury School Administrators and Supervisors Association for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate everybody's efforts. Approval of Simsbury High School graduation date.
Rocking that Friday.
That's a beautiful thing.
We're excited. So in 2019, the Connecticut Legislature passed an act that allowed local boards of education to set a firm graduation date for students in grade 12 as long as it is not earlier than the now noted last day of school of that school year. So for us, our last day of school is currently noted as Friday, June 7th, and that's when we would recommend that we set our graduation date. So there is a motion there for your consideration.
Look at the smile on the parent of the senior over there. That's it. It is a beautiful thing not to have to wait till April 1st. It is lovely.
It's a beautiful thing not to be on a Monday. I love it.
So Mr. Watson, want to make a motion?
I'll move that the Simsbury High School graduation date be established on June 7, 2024.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor? Congratulations, seniors.
Check.
Done. All right, so now we're into information reports and Jen and Neil's favorite presentation of the year.
Been waiting all day for it.
Thank you to all eight board members for being here. For, it seems like just yesterday we were here. But what I want to be able to do is sort of quickly move through the report. Have a few places where I've got some things to highlight, but I think it's fairly straightforward. I know I tipped a little bit of the headline last time that one of the things we do need to talk about is the kindergarten number and projection. So we'll focus a little bit on that. But I do want to start by introducing to the board my guest that I've invited for the evening, who's hiding in the back row, which is Laura Schellman, who is our Director of Enrollment and Transportation and really the person who puts all of the detail into this work to make sure that we are recording things properly, we are welcoming families into Simsbury and that all of these, working with the building secretaries and the principals and making sure that this is all accurate and she does a tremendous job. And I asked her to be here tonight because I thought she deserved the recognition, but she probably could also answer some of your questions too. We'll see.
Not for young.
Not going to forgive him for that.
So as you know, October 1st is the annual day for the counting of the children.
It's October 1st, do you know where your children are?
So this year, it was celebrated on September 30th, Friday, September 30th, as opposed to Saturday, October 1st. So a little bit like celebrating on Christmas Eve instead of Christmas, but just as special. And as we usually say, that this presentation really is the first in the budget cycle because this is the one that is going to determine much of what we talk about over the next few months. So I will start with sort of the key number that you will compare all the rest of the slides to, which is the one in the bottom-left corner here, which is the final count ended up at 4,104 students. So everything else you'll see is going to compare to that actual number of 4,104. And you can see this slide shows that that was 40 students more than October 1st of last year. Almost the exact same number at the elementary schools, very close at the middle school where there were seven more students and 32 more students at Simsbury High. In terms of why there were 32 students more at Simsbury High, it was a pretty small graduating class. I mean, it's really...
Oh, so the ninth grade bumped you?
Yeah. So it's really pretty straightforward why that number went up a bit. To look at the elementary in particular, you can see that the school that had the biggest increase was Latimer Lane with 20 more students than it had a year ago, whereas Squadron Line has 23 fewer students. Again, this is all about the end classes. Latimer Lane actually had a very small sixth grade that moved out and sort of a normal-sized kindergarten, which caused that number to go up. And Squadron ended up with a much smaller kindergarten than anticipated. So the number, and they had, they actually had a very full sixth grade last spring. So that's why that number went down by 23. So pretty remarkable that we were within one after a whole year, but...
I'll wait.
I'm not letting her get on the kindergarten thing because I know you're...
I'm waiting.
So here's the, here's the look at, now instead of looking at actual, we're looking at comparison to the projections. And you can see that overall, the projection for the elementary missed by 98 students. We were 98 students lower than Nezdek thought we would be. In particular, we were 58 students lower at Squadron Line than Nezdek thought we might be and 29 fewer at Tooten Hills. Almost all of that can be tracked to kindergarten again. You know, we have three very, I'm sorry, four very manageable kindergartens at Squadron Line. Last few years, we've been pushing into five kindergartens. So it's a whole class less than Nezdek was expecting. And you can see, they were right on the money with the projections at the secondary level for Henry James and the high school. So overall, their projection missed by 105 fewer students. I'll show you where that compares to how they've done historically in a couple more slides. So this is by grade where the, where the differences are. And so you can see there that the kindergarten projection is almost 80 students off. And that is a number we have not seen in these projections in a long, long time. Like that's, that's a real miss to be 80 students off. So I dug into why that mishappened and you, what happens is that the way this all works is that it's based on a ratio of how many students who are born five years earlier than, than what's your number of kindergarten students? So you have to take any student born in the year 2018 and say, how many kindergarteners in October 1st of 2023 is that going to produce? And based on, they figure that out based on, well, what were those numbers in the five previous years? In 2017, how many were born? And how many kindergarteners did we have in 2022? 2016 and 2021? And that's what they do. If you do that for the last five years, our ratio was a number that is 1.54. So for every 100 births, you would get 154 kindergarteners in the last five years. So there were a lot of births in 2018 in Simsbury. There were 230 births. And so what Nezdek did is take that 230 and they multiplied it by the 1.54 that has been the historical average. And it was the exact number last year. And they got that projection that you could see up there of 354. At the end of the day, the ratio only ended up as 1.2. So what we ended up with is the 275 that you could see on the left-hand column. So 1.2 is not an unheard-of ratio. That's kind of what we were seeing in the earlier part of this decade and like the last decade, in like 2010, 11, 12. That's about what that ratio was. It's called a persistency ratio in the business. And that's, but it's not, it did not look like 1.54 and therefore they were off. So we dug in, did more people hold kindergarteners back? It does not appear so. Like we don't, we have evidence that Michelleman came, dug into that we can prove right now that 51 people did not send their kindergartner this year who had a child that was eligible but did not send them. But the year before, we had 48 and the year before that, we had 67. So it doesn't appear like an unusual number held their kids back. And, you know, it's going to, it's going to take a little time to see. I suspect the number of 230 births, that there were an unusual number of people whose children were born in Simsbury and then they bought a house elsewhere before the kid enrolled in kindergarten. That's unusual. Normally, they stay in Simsbury, but, you know, given the housing market, they may not have been able to find the house in Simsbury. So the fact that we only got 275 is certainly shocking. I don't think Nezdek made a bad projection based on their methodology, but they got a bad result. And as a result, this was pretty far off when we look at these things. As you can see on the rest of the column, the other grade levels are far more predictable and so...
Neil, could this, I'm just, my wheels are turning as you're talking.
Could it be maybe that in COVID, families moved to be closer to other family members? Like, is there any sort of recognition of a COVID impact on these numbers?
So these were 2018 births.
Right, so you have a two-year-old in the pandemic.
Correct.
Go visit, go stay with mom and dad.
But we would not have captured that as a birth in 2018 if they weren't born here. Those are, that's Department of Public Health data that they pull to say, how many kids? Birth certificate said that they live at Simsbury and the answer was 230.
And I think I'm saying like during COVID, I know a lot of peoples whose adult children moved to them, stayed with them because they could all work remotely and nobody needed to be in a particular place. So I'm wondering if there's a COVID impact to be had on some of these live birth numbers going forward for a little while.
I think perhaps for a little while.
So the more interesting thing is, right, what did they do with the algorithm moving forward?
Right.
They probably adjusted to 1.2 and then what does that do to that five-year projection we've had? That looks like we're going to shoot straight up and maybe we won't grow as significantly as we thought, right? So that'll be interesting for us to think.
The first grade next year, I'm trying to think about where they've gotten it that far off in the past. If that does anything to the first grade.
When we look at rolling sections.
Yeah.
It's hard to get very far off after the kindergarten size is established.
Right.
Right. It's inconsistent.
If you're looking, it was projected to be the biggest class in our entire district.
Correct.
And now it's the smallest class in the entire district.
Correct.
But here's, here's why I don't under.
So that, that 230 births just did not yield.
Yeah.
Kindergarteners.
When we, I don't know if you have it in here somewhere, but like when we looked at the now third grade, that year that we did this little presentation, I'm almost positive that that class was the smallest at like 269 or something. But now they're all the way up to 2.
295.
295. Where did all those kids come from?
They were the smallest at 252.
Correct, so then what, now they're 295, right in row with.
But there's always a natural in migration from K to 1, that's always a big jump year.
Okay.
Or bigger jump year in terms of, um, projections after that, it's, it pretty much stabilizes moving.
And probably a handful of those, you remember, uh, it'll come up later. People chose to homeschool too.
Right.
And that was not going to be a long-term decision, those kids were coming back. So there might be a little bump in that because a lot of people kept their smallest kids home.
What, are we getting reliable answers to that enrollment survey we're sending out in the winter before kindergarten?
So, um, I, I'm, it's hard to know. I mean, we certainly send it to, um, you know, everybody who works to all of the daycares, to seed, to our elementary communities. I mean, um, we, we do pretty well with knowing who's in town, but, um, you know, it's not an exact science in terms of how we're, um, really that starts, we already have, um, about 175 kids who we know, um, would, would, under the old system, be eligible for kindergarten next year, under the current system. We're going to talk about that too tonight. Um, and, um, I can tell you that next, so when we start talking about how many births were there in 2019, it, it dropped again, it went from 230 in 2018 to 210 births in 2019. So that number also goes down.
I mean, I, I know we knew before October 1st that the number was going to be low, but do we, and that 79 gets spread over all of the kindergarten classes, but did we staff for 354 and have to adjust?
So we staffed for 354, you'll remember that we added four new positions into the budget. Two were for special ed and two were for kindergarten. So we ended up not needing those two for kindergarten. So what we ended up doing was actually turning one of them into another special ed teacher. And we did three elementary special ed teachers. And then when we did a cut, we were supposed to take an FTE from the high school. And because of increases in American Sign Language and PE, we actually weren't able to realize that cut. And I said, don't worry, I got an extra kindergarten section. Like so.
Lost it out.
Great.
So it washed out.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good, good to see how that works out though.
Right, right.
All right, so that's my big ratio, persistency ratio theory. That's one of the highlights of the presentation, so I hope you liked it.
Clearly we did.
Uh, let me see where I am here.
Can I?
Sure.
We, we have had, uh, issues with projections with them in the past to the degree that we went to a different vendor at one point and came back. I, I am, I am just baffled that we have, uh, they missed by 80. Um, that's a huge miss as we're all suggesting. Are they the only game in town? Is there only any alternative? Because that's.
So that's this slide, Jess.
Segue.
So this is one of my favorites, but now it might be one of yours too. Um, where this is just looking at how do they do over time? And you could see that the minus 105 is a pretty bad result compared to, um, the last two years have been excellent. They were right on the money in the last two years. Everybody gave a pass in 2021 because it was the COVID year. So your projection was, everybody's was low. So, um, so I can tell you that you'll, you'll remember we used Malone and McBroom. Um, and they went out of this business, they stopped doing this work. Um, I did pull out Malone and McBroom's projection from, um, November of 2020 was the last time they did this work for us. Uh, they were 11 off as compared to 105. And they were three years out from that. Now they don't do the work anymore, but there are others that do the work in terms of Nezdeck. I mean, I think this one is, um, you know, you're, you've, you, they've done accurate projections the last two years. I think you have to turn this back to them. We, we, it's a membership organization and then they do the projections because you're a member. So we've already paid for the membership this year and we ought to get the projection. Um, and, you know, I think, I, I need to have the conversation with them about where did we err here? How are you going to adjust? And then we got to see how they do. But I don't want to overreact by saying, but there are, um, the, the gentleman that used to work for Malone and McBroom now works for another company down in Glastonbury that does do this work. So that, that is a possibility for the future.
A conversation to be had.
But, you know, I, I want to give it another chance. You, you don't fire a coach just because he started one and four.
Not with, not with six Super Bowls. Maybe a conversation after the season, but that's.
Exactly.
That's a discussion for another meeting.
Just like I. This is one that we've historically taken, uh, taken a look at, just where are we in the last five years? And you can see we have recovered from the dip of the COVID year, which is now, um, showing as the low mark was 3960, but from where we started five years ago, we're, we're within, uh, 80 students. So again, very, it's been, it's been pretty stable, um, but did work through that dip. This is the elementary enrollment that.
Back to seven for a second, I'm not done.
Todd's got more.
Out of curiosity, do, did they comment on this persistency ratio? Whether it was lower than they expected everywhere or in other districts or was it just a Simsbury thing?
I haven't had the conversation with them yet. Usually what happens is you now turn in your next set of data and then you have a conversation.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I can report back in November about that.
I'd be curious to have an answer.
Yep, I'm very interested to see what they have to say.
And to hop on slide eight. I was curious, do you have like an increase of 79 students over eight years? Is that typical of Farmington Valley? Like, is everyone seeing that? Is that a bigger, are we growing faster than others or?
That's a pretty stable number. Um, that would not be considered, that would not be considered very aggressive growth in any way.
Okay.
Like this was a 20-year example of aggressive decline before it turned around. I mean, so those of you who have been on the board the longest will remember that decline of students. Um, and, uh, that was a very rapid decline of elementary students at that time. Going from, um, over, uh, 2,600 all the way down to, um, fewer than 2,000 before it rebound, rebounded. So right now it's obviously exactly flat, but we'll continue to monitor that. Um, as, uh, we always talk about, there are also pre-K students. They don't count in our, uh, count to the state, but there are a hundred of them, full-time, part-time, a mix of, um, there are, um, 42 who are special education students and 58 were not. So that's the makeup of our preschool right now. It'll change over the course of the year as new special ed kids become eligible, uh, when they turn the right age. And, um, as you pointed out, the, the largest cohort is the current seventh grade and also the current 12th grade, but the current 12th grade is a little bit of a misnomer because it does count those 18 to 22-year-old students who still, so there are 24 students who are, um, really sort of in grade 13, as we like to call it. So, um, there's nowhere to report a grade 13 for the state, so you end up reporting them in grade 12. So that's, that's what that's about. And then as, um, the smallest cohorts are indeed the kindergarten cohort and I hate to call them this, the COVID cohort, but that, that's the year they started and that's why that, that is, that number is 295. Cause they started in 2020, we'll be talking about them until they graduate. Um, we did have 177 as a final count on October 1st for open choice students. Um, I moved to this slide to show you that it now represents, uh, the first year that we were able to get to the board's goal at that time of 4% of the student body as open choice students was 2017-18. So we are now on our seventh consecutive year that we've been able to maintain that 4% goal. Um, the pre-K students are proving to be a challenge, they just aren't coming at that uh, young age anymore. I, I, I think parents are more reluctant to send them to pre-K. So we've struggled the last few years, we opened 12 seats and we don't fill them. So, um, but we had a lot of sibling seats this year. Um, and we're able to pretty safely keep it above 4%. That would be an area where Ms. Schellman works very hard to make sure these families get it, what they need to be able to register in the Simsbury Public Schools, so I want to thank her for that effort. I do, uh, there is a, a point, uh, in your more detailed exhibit, there is a whole sheet on magnet schools that lists a lot of, uh, different, uh, schools. We, we don't send a ton of students to very many. There are three that I would say have a critical mass, um, uh, two in Avon and one in Bloomfield, which is probably why. So that the ones that do attract Simsbury families really at the kindergarten and pre-K level are the Anna Grace Arts Academy at the, at the base of the, at the base of the hill there, um, uh, uh, at Route 10, Reggio Magnet and then, um, Winton Berry Early Child Center. So those are the three, uh, and again, they're attracting mostly pre-K and K students. We also have part-time magnet students, these are at, uh, places like the Academy for the Performing Arts and there's just a handful of them. The 131 at full-time programs do not count in your 4,104, but the seven who are part-time do count in the 4,104. I, I, I'll.
I was just going to ask on the magnet schools with the Reggio and the Winton Berry, do we generally get those kids back in first grade?
The Winton Berry kids, definitely.
Okay.
The Reggio kids may linger for another grade or two because they have those grades.
Yeah, they, it looks like they go up to grade four, three?
Um, and I think Anna Grace Academy has gotten a little more popular. So we'll see three or four, five Simsbury kids in.
Oh, yeah. Okay, but, but with Winton Berry, they all.
They all come back.
They don't seek another magnet school, they come back here, okay.
So we had never tracked homeschool students in this report before you asked me to during COVID. So, and we saw a pretty significant increase between 1920 and 2021. Went from 20 homeschooled students all the way more than doubled to 46. Um, and that number did come back down and it's sort of come, has sort of settled in the 30s. And so this year, um, 36 students. Um, I'll continue to track this, but at this point, I think anything that we felt due to COVID has sort of settled out um, at, on this particular measure. And then we transitioned into the newer developments that we always have some conversation about. Um, and you can see here, I'll highlight a, a few of the newer developments. Carson Way, which is, uh, single-family homes near the Stretton Brook area. Um, it's finally complete. All 74 units have been built and, um, uh, our local real estate folks are very happy about that. Um, and it is not an area, it is much more, it's not totally over 55 housing, but it trends that way. So we're only seeing 11 students out of 74 homes in that development. The others, um, Highcroft Place, um, in that same geographic area, uh, is, uh, a little bit of an uptick this year, so, um, that's important. And then I do want to talk about Dorset Crossing. Uh, the board knows that we've, we've almost completely finished the transition. We transitioned Dorset Crossing, it had been placed at Squadron Line. And a couple of years ago, we made the shift to, um, bring students who live in that complex to Terriffill. There are only, you could see only a couple left at Squadron Line and they'll age out, um, this coming year. Um, and then that will be a, a Terriffill school, which is how it's zoned, it's in the Terriffill zone. But please point, uh, note that 72 more units at Dorset Crossing have been approved. This has gone all the way through zoning and it's approved. And it's when, a matter of when they want to break ground.
Are those straight-up apartments or townhomes?
They are apartments. There are three buildings of 24 apartments each sort of behind where the current complex is.
Okay.
Um, and the person at Dorset Crossing who was the receptionist did not know when they might be starting that. I can go downstairs and dig a little more if there are plans to start that, but, um, you know, it would take probably about a year to get up and running before we knew what that was. So that's 72 more units approved.
Do we have room at Terriffill?
Uh, we would have enough room at Terriffill for that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that. And then Cambridge Crossing was another property that we started to migrate toward Terriffill School as well because we were concerned that it was producing a lot of students. Um, it's not a secret here, I can speak publicly about it because it's been in the media. That, that development has ran, run into financial disaster. I mean, they are really up against it in terms of, so the, the project has stalled. So right now there are 33 completed units and there are a few sort of shells of houses that are not completed and they don't even know if they're going to be able to complete them. Um, and then there were some that were under contract that people are trying to get out of the contract.
Is that the one behind Antonio's?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, we had started, in fact, uh, you could see six of the kids this year had moved in there within the last year and we had them zoned for Terriffill. And sort of the plan was anybody else who moved in was going to go to Terriffill. I don't think anybody else is going to be moving in anytime quickly. I, I think this thing is really ground to a halt for a while until another developer comes in and tries to rescue the site. So right now, um, and they're, I know the town is doing some things to try to help the current residents um, to, uh, make sure they are, are taken care of. But, um, unfortunately, the, the development has really faced a crisis point, um, in the last year or so. So, um, and then, um, Aspen Green, uh, down on the Avon border, pretty significant increase this year. I'm going to show you that on the next slide. And then we definitely have to talk about the Ridge at Talcott Mountain, which is now complete with 300 units and is producing a lot of kids, 51 kids, um, in the school system. Um, and at the elementary level, you'll recall that even though that site is geographically very close to Latimer, we have been, um, sending it to Central School for the last three, four years. Um, and so that was a good decision because, um, it produced a lot of kids and the room was available at Central School. But please look at the bottom number because this is not approved by the town yet. So unlike Dorset Crossing where the 72 is approved, the proposal for the next site at the Ridge at Talcott Mountain is for 580 units, including like 68 single-family homes that would definitely more attract more kids. So we have definitely got to keep an eye on what happens with the Ridge, they're calling it the Ridge at Talcott Mountain South.
Do you know where it is in the process?
It is um, early proposals right now.
With zoning or?
With, uh, I'm not sure they've uh.
I don't think it's come to.
I don't think it's come to that yet.
Okay.
But they've definitely had some conversation and they have site plans and I, I mean. If you want to see them, stop by my office, I have site plans and it's um.
Scary.
It's a lot and if, it if, you know, they asked me to estimate how many I thought, and if you just take this ratio. And the fact that some of them are single-family, it will be well over a hundred students. That that, if, if that number of five-eighty comes true.
Look at the ratios in Cambridge Crossing, they're so much higher than the other ones.
Right, right. So we've definitely got to keep an eye on that. So then this is the comparison to um. Where they've been since I've been tracking this data since two thousand seventeen. And you can see it is an uptick of almost forty students this year. Um, mostly at uh, the Ridge and Aspen Green and Highcroft is where you see. Um, the increase and a little bit of Cambridge Crossing before that stalled. So um, a hundred and ninety-six students from these developments. These developments didn't exist before two thousand fourteen, so it's about five percent of your population. Now lives at addresses that didn't exist ten years ago. So it's definitely interesting to track. I don't think it's, uh, I don't think we're in any kind of danger zone, but I think we gotta really watch that next. I mean, that's like a mega development.
It's just like a bullseye on Latimer.
Yeah.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Those are on the slide before this, the Cambridge Squadron Line kids, will we move them to Terriffill too? Or we're only gonna keep those six at Terriffill and leave the others at Squadron?
We're letting the others kind of age out of Squadron. We're sending two buses in there for the next few years. A, a Terriffill bus comes and gets those first six and then like a half an hour later, the bus goes back in and the Squadron kids come. So.
And then.
JR Salter said he's willing to do it for a few more years, he's not happy about it, but he's willing, he's willing to do it.
Isn't Eli Place and Hoskins going to Terriffill anyway, so it's not like the bus is going or out of the way?
No, I think they're. No, they go to Squadron.
They all go to Squadron, okay.
And then my other.
Thank you, Laura.
And as much as I love graphs, I wanted to ask on slide thirteen, you just didn't pause long enough for me to interrupt you, so I didn't want to. On slide thirteen.
It's okay to go back.
Is there any way, um, is there any way to include like how many families that equates to?
Homeschooled families?
Yeah, because I'd be curious like how many of those kids?
Yeah, it's definitely, they.
Is it like four kids in one family?
Yeah.
It just makes it more, you know, so you can see how many.
Yeah.
How many families are making that choice?
Yeah, just curious.
Right. So we end the enrollment report uh, with saying sort of. Again, that the data now has to be submitted to Nezdeck for that very important conversation we talked about. Earlier and we've got to talk about what adjustments they're gonna make due to not only the K projection that was off. But the new legislation about kindergarten that we're gonna talk about later tonight. Saying that if you were born between September and December. You're no longer eligible to go to kindergarten next year. So that's gonna deflate the number even more. So we're gonna cover that in the next presentation, but um, it's really, now I'm not, and Nezdeck would be. Used to that, because that is how it works in the other New England states. So they would have done projections in the other New England states.
Are they having?
Or districts that.
They were all September one?
Most are.
And like that two hundred and thirty births in twenty eighteen, like does that take out those kids that were September? You know what I'm saying, like could some of those kids, they didn't come because they knew this was coming?
Fifty-one kids that were held are gonna be part of our number next year.
Were they held because of that or were they held just because they're a Septem- they're a Burb- a Burb baby?
Many are held, many are held because, yeah, it's pretty, you, you, you could, it's pretty much July and on. You'll find an occasional.
Right.
Kid that gets held who had an April birthday, but not, it's usually summer and fall birthdays that parents decide to hold. We, we actually track it, this is one of, so if you take a school, this is how Laura does. So green meant you got held back, yellow is within the range and then these are kids who next year would be ineligible. And so we just visually can see at each school, like we track the kids of who's.
That is a nice chart and I love the colors, I like that, nice job.
And it's literally just listing chronologically, it's the, this is the oldest kid down to the youngest kid.
Great.
Kid, as your chair of your facilities and enrollment um, committee, I'm having heart palpitations at the thought of. Five hundred units going on on the south end of town, especially when we just went through the. Collegial process of having Latimer Lane renovated, um, just anything. Anything we can do, I mean, I'm just.
I think we should talk about.
There has to be, there has to be some conversations between us and zoning or who, or the select towns, I mean. Th- this is, it's gonna put us in a serious box.
Right.
So I do think that it would uh, be, I was talking to Matt a little bit about this. I do think we should probably meet once or twice this year, just to sort of talk about what's on the horizon. Cause, and this too, um, I think we, as a board and you did it at you, uh, the workshop last year. It's like looking at where, if Squadron Line is our next priority, where does it get placed on a capital improvement plan? To get, you know, so I think there's two big conversations.
Absolutely.
I think it's the Squadron conversation and the potential of a massive new development.
And I just want to be clear, I, I'm not here to, to, to opine on whether we should build or not build, I just think we have to, there, the communication has to be there.
Well, we have to remember fifty-one kids out of Talkit go to Central right now.
No, no, fewer than that go to Central, that's, that's K twelve, fifty-one is.
Fifty-one, oh, these numbers are all K twelve?
Yes.
But the kids that are elementary right now are going to Central, right, so we have to think about that too when Latimer's. Renovation is complete in terms of capacity as well.
All right, and then the rest of this is continuing to monitor, one more year. In one year, Latimer will be done and we're gonna have some space and that will be a good thing. Uh, help with some of the crowding, not only at Latimer, but also at Squadron, I think, so that's sort of.
We're currently using six preschool rooms?
We currently use six preschool rooms, one of which is an RSG room.
And then you have two RSG rooms listed, so is that three total?
Those are K six.
Okay.
So yes, three total RSG rooms.
Sorry, for other people who don't know, ready, set, go, I just whispered it to Jen, that's what RSG means, for anybody who might be wanting to know. Our ready, set, go program.
Okay.
All right, you had so many questions while we went along, I feel like I can move forward. And look at the class size slide before I invite our secondary folks up here. So our elementary slide, uh, uh, really, the numbers look great um, this year, I just have to. Say that we staffed appropriately. We have, uh, by not adding those two kindergartens, we ended up with the exact same number of teachers at the elementary level. Number is a hundred and ten, out of those. One hundred and ten, none of the classes are above your class size guidelines. We were close to kindergarten at Latimer, but they, the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two was where they came at the end. Um, and then only four of the classes are below your class size guidelines. Um, all in the grades three through six level, sort of nothing you could have done about them. Um, so very efficient too, like the, the class size policy is serving us well in terms of. We're hiring the right number of teachers at a, a hundred and ten and this is then the slide, you can just take a look. That that's a really clean look at what the classes in Simsbury at the elementary level. Look like, I mean, they're appropriately sized, there's a lot of eighteen, nineteen, twenties that are. Um, a comfortable size for an elementary classroom, so I feel really good about where we are on this one, this year. Um, and we'll have to monitor that, that Latimer at twenty-two each in kindergarten. May have some growing pains until the new building opens. We will cross that bridge when we get to it. So I am gonna invite Mr. Baker and Mr. Para forward for a few minutes.
Substituting in. Mrs. Trell is usually on top of this report.
So don't ask you too many questions.
Don't ask me too many pointed questions.
But we like.
Um, all right, so we can start with Henry James, um, I think I'll start with just the headline in that. Um, our overall enrollment um, is very similar from um, last year to this year. And, but the enrollment in the individual grades is not, um, so we had, we let go of a large class. And then seventh grade, a smaller class came up to, to eighth grade. And then in came a larger class, that large class that um, Neil referred to, um, coming up um, at seventh grade. So we remained the same, um, but we um, had to shift some things around internally, so I was gonna talk about that a little bit. What we have generally done is we have um, a three-point-O team, so three full teams um, in seventh grade now. We had three teams in eighth grade, so I switched that around and had that, had the two-point-six team follow that small cohort up to eighth grade. So now we have three full teams in seventh grade and two-point-six teams in eighth grade. And the reason that's important is because I think it drives some of the, some of the things you'll see. This chart's different than what I've got in my uh. But, so the numbers of classes that exceed um, are at twenty-one, I think those really come from. A lot of the singletons, so you have like your honors algebra class, there's only one of them. Or your um, you know, some of the La- Latin classes, you only have one of them at each level. So some of those come, come into play when you have your, your exceeding range and your below range, so, so the singletons complete, um, can. Drive some of that. Um, and then also the fact that you have that two-point-six team in the eighth grade gives just some scheduling pieces where it's difficult to, to figure that. So we have a number of classes that went up exceeding range and again, I think that's partially because of the limitations in scheduling in eighth grade. Um, but also partially because of those singleton classes um, in the UAs, um, in the wellness classes, um, and such, that's where you see um, some of that. The below range stayed fairly stable um, as well, um, and so that's where, where you see those numbers. I think what we've seen in prior years is a lot of those numbers in the Family, Consumer Science, Tech Ed and Art Classes that, as you can see. We've only got one, um, it's really only one class, one cohort of kids in that Art, Family, Consumer Science and Tech Ed. So it looks on this chart like there's three classes, but those are three.
Same class moving three times.
The class that moves around, right, so it's one cohort of kids throughout the year um, that is over-enrolled and then we have none that are below, um, which I think is, is excellent. Um, the wellness classes, um, part of that, um, I think you can see for the exceeding range. Is our ability to get all those wellness classes on team. So those teachers, the wellness teacher teaches on the team with, and meets um, with the academic teachers on those teams. So that creates some schedule constraints um, sometimes in there and that's where you get um, some of those that are, that are bumping up against the guidelines and bumping under the guidelines. And that's really the story of those classes that are over and under.
When, when they're over, it's hard to, with one, okay.
Two, yeah, they're not, they're not bursting. Um, and some of that is be, just because of like, well, in the Art, Family, Consumer Science and Tech Ed, it's because you only have so many. Um, machines, right, sewing machines. Um, or in, in music, sometimes I get that you only have so many keyboards in the, in the class, you can't go over in those classes. Um, because there's not enough, there's not enough seats um, for the kids, so that's why you have some of those numbers the way they are. The wellness classes are pretty easy to accommodate for, um, in the numbers when they, when they go over. So I think that's the headline there. Um, just to talk about a couple other pieces, I think what we are gonna have to think about next year, this report's gonna look very different. Because we have this, this very large seventh grade cohort coming up and there's a large sixth grade cohort behind it. So total enrollment um, for Henry James next year are at, like if nothing changes, should be around six-sixty. It hasn't been that big since I've been principal. Um, so we're gonna have to start doing some mock, I think, um, loading of schedules to see what this is gonna look like. Um, and, and move around the teams to maybe not a three-point-O team and a two-point-six team like we have now, but two two-point-eight teams. See if that'll do it and if it doesn't, then like where are we, right? So that's something we're gonna be keeping a close eye on um, right now in the fall and running some, some mock um, enrollments. With a six-sixty and see what we can create as a schedule, see what that's gonna look like, so that's something we have our eye on. Um, another thing we um, are taking a close look, look on is our connections classes and this is, doesn't necessarily have too much to do with. This report, but I just wanted to highlight it, is that this is something we do at the middle level where we assign a teacher. To a small group of um, students somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve to fifteen kids, where we do a lot of our SCL work, we meet twice a week. Um, and one of our wins this year of the schedule, we were able to get, we've done those randomly, I think ever since Ms. Lemke was principal. Um, by the alphabet and we decided this year we're gonna do something different and make sure that the connections teacher, so say you're, you know, Brian Foreman. Some, last year, he would have kids in his connection that he never saw, so they just come to him for that. So we did a really complex exercise to make sure that every connections teacher had that um, teacher for something else. So every student that's in connection with Mr. Foreman has Mr. Foreman for the first round of the trimester, so. They really get to know the kids um, right off of that, so that was a big win, we're happy about that, um, but. By spreading, um, everybody has a connections if you're a classroom teacher at Henry James, so that keeps those numbers down. Um, for those, you know, conversations that they could have about some heavy things sometimes. Um, so that's excellent. Um, the other piece that um, Jack and wanted me to just mention is something that you could hear something about is. Um, that we've had to increase the number of our reading classes um, this year and so we have um. A few extra reading classes that special education teachers are delivering, which then has bumped up the size of our um. Of our study skills classes, um, so where the study skills class would have had eight kids, it's got more like twelve to thirteen kids in there now. So something we're looking at, I think it's going well, um, we've got plenty of parent support in those classes, but it's something we're keeping an eye on, on. Cause it's related to enrollment and it is, um, and it's uh, pushed those classes just a little bit higher. So I think that's everything I've got, any questions?
Are, are those in the core? Class group?
Which ones is this?
Reading ones?
Reading classes, no, it's, that's in addition to their um, English class, that they are getting additional reading support.
In terms of the range on here?
It doesn't fall into, it's, they're not above any range that is established.
Okay.
But like I said, just something we're taking, we're keeping an eye on.
All right. All right, Mr. Para, take us home.
Hey, great, so um, I'm happy, we, we're moving in the right direction from where we were last year in terms of uh. Getting classes within the uh, limits that you had set. Our, our drive is to make sure that we, number one part of our build is to make sure that we don't exceed the, the limits. And ninety-nine percent of our classes fall into the fact that they don't exceed, some are below, but ninety-nine percent do. I think the number, is it, I can't.
Six.
Six, yeah, so four core classes, uh, one technology, one phys ed, the, the four core classes, it's a. Spanish three class, twenty-six or twenty-seven, there are two AP psychology classes at twenty-seven. Um, I can't recall what the fourth one is, it'll come to me, but.
Precalc.
Precalc, yeah, a precalc.
Let me help you.
Yeah, thank you, and usually we get a lot of um, uh, geo classes that start above, it depends on when we do this in terms of the add. Uh, not the add drop, but the level change window. This, we, we pulled, we waited for the numbers, but we pulled this about three, two or three days into the um, first window. So it's, it's a pretty accurate number that we, we have here as well. Um, we were able to get fewer classes uh, below, remember we were at a, from, since I've been here, an all-time high at one oh eight. Um, we, we were down to ninety in the core, um, and all of the other classes are kind of. Uh, fewer or, or where they've been from, from the year before. Again, reiterating what I've said in years past and what Scott just said, many, many of these classes are the single classes. That fall um, in the below category. Um, a lot of the other ones are the, you get thirty people sign up for a class. And so one of them ends up below or, or, or the case, so you can get eighty sign up and the, the way the numbers can play out, it, it, it's just an odd number. So that's where most of those that fall below go, the other are the um, the, the uh, elective courses. Those, one of the comments I had made or one of the notes I had made on this is that we're, we're understanding the impact now. That um, our graduation requirement of our capstone has on the schedule, last year we were feeling that out a little bit. That impacts some of the visual art classes that are below, um, some of the business in that. If the class limit is 15, 15 isn't always 15. What I mean by that is like you can have 15 kids in the class, you could have 11 kids in four capstone. Those four capstone kids count kind of a little more in terms of the demands on the teachers that they have. And also that has some impact, but it's not a significant impact. It's balanced itself, at least for two straight years now. The number of kids that end up taking the actual course itself to reach capstone is, is been pretty level. Some student, like the number of students who are doing it through a project lead the way or, or doing it on their own, that, that seems to have played itself out. Or are starting at junior year. It seems like it's following a pattern. So that's been helpful to us when we design all of these classes. Overall, we had done, I was working with Neil, it's about 70% of our classes fall, it's, it's close to probably the 75 from when I was doing it, but about 75% fall absolutely within the guidelines. And like I said, about 1% fall over and the rest can fall below. And in terms of overall, where the classes fall below, the, the class, the, the discipline that has the most is our world language department. They have the most singletons in that as well. And, and that's kind of where it falls. And, and we, we have this all the time, being a, we, we pride ourselves on our offerings. And because of that, some classes fall below, very few classes fall above, except for that, that AP psychology course. So that's where we're at. I don't know if there's any questions or anything I missed.
Is the reason that the, there's fewer classes exceeding guidelines in the high school compared to Henry James? Because you have more electives, so you'll fill a class and say, find something else?
That could absolutely, that, that's definitely a difference between the two.
We have.
Find something else, right? Yeah.
I had a question. For the performing arts, it looks like there's a big drop off in the number of classes. Is that just because last year's was so high or does there seem to be like a downtick trend? Because I know like I'm in a theater class that got combined.
Yep. There's definitely fewer students taking that particular course. Really, I could give a, I, I'd have put more time into it, but I give you a fascinating, it's how much things have changed over the past few years. Our physics numbers are down quite a bit, our performing arts numbers are down quite a bit. Our family consumer science has grown tremendously overnight, pretty much. So it's, it, it's been interesting over the past few years. And with the three math credits and with the new credits overall, we don't know how it's going to play itself out either as well.
Do you have any ideas why or are you thinking on the physics part, like why there would be?
Yeah. I think based talking to Mr. Stillman, how the guidance, it's, a lot of kids are choosing.
Stats.
Stats are going into that, that's the number that's growing. But kids are choosing, hey, this isn't worth it. This isn't worth, like, like I'm going to limit what courses I'm taking, how many high level courses I'm taking. Like, I'm either going to get into this, perhaps band one square, whatever terms we use, I'm not sure anymore. If I'm not going to, I don't know if I need to take AP physics. I don't know if I need to take, so kids are starting to really take a step back, look at where they're going and kind of create a path forward from there.
So, so is it that they're not even enrolling or they're starting and then they're changing their mind and dropping? They're not even enrolling?
Yep.
Okay. So is it happening enough that it would end up going away?
Our physics won't go away, no, no, but fewer sections.
Okay, just fewer sections.
I mean, this year we offered the physics AP one and two. We didn't offer it the year before. So in a sense that's growing, but our overall numbers for where they were years ago, like our level two physics are.
People who are there really want to be there and.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, your senior year, don't, isn't that the time when you have the option of, is physics is senior, right? And so isn't environmental science also?
Environmental science.
Do we see more people taking environmental science?
We have the same number of students in science overall. Environmental science, more kids have started to take the forensics A and B as well that they go into.
Right. Because the kids think that that environmental science is like an easier route, an easier AP than.
My daughter's taking AP environmental science, now she's taking stats instead of calculus. And so that's, that was.
I was just curious if I see.
Yeah, the stats have grown tremendously, those numbers. And, and you know, it's, there's a free market in some ways. And you get certain teachers that kids will flock to a particular course or a particular discipline, that's tied definitely to family consumer science. So it all kind of plays itself out.
I think also the graduation requirement, you didn't need four years of science. So a lot of people, I know a lot of my friends didn't really see a point in taking physics or science senior year if they could take a half year elective or psych or stats.
And the capstone didn't also deter you at all from taking a science? Or you think that capstone credit takes into account that?
I'm kind of a different case because my capstone is in my theater class. But I know a lot of people have had, or not a lot, but I know some people that have had scheduling issues with capstone.
So maybe impacts the decision.
Yeah.
It's one factor in a lot of factors that influences it.
There are many other things.
Alright, thank you to all three of our guests tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we are back to our second public audience.
No, 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 no.
No, we're not.
Nope.
Oh, legislative reveal, sorry.
Nice try.
So this is, I, yeah, I spoke about this at the last meeting with the heavy legislative agenda and number of laws that were passed, just to select a handful, to get them in front of the board prior to any policy revision. So you can understand some of the specifics.
Yes.
And some of the things we're wrestling with as we, we start our planning. So Sue's going to take a piece, Neil's going to take a piece.
I'm sorry, I, I was so lost in my numbers of class sizes.
Gets exciting.
Sorry. I said I need a snack.
Sue, Sue.
So I'll kick it off. Certainly there are a number of different disciplines that fall under the office of teaching and learning. And one that I find consistently represented in legislative mandates is special education. So this year was certainly no different. And I want to highlight three different aspects of special ed legislation that came out of these past sessions. First of all, eligibility extension. So this has had a couple of different iterations even since I was in the office of special education. So we used to hit an age of majority or aging out for our students with most significant disabilities at the end of their school year in which they turn 21. As I was transitioning to the office of teaching and learning, the legislation extended the interpretation of that age of majority to the 22nd birthday. So that was the next iteration. In this past legislative session, they've extended it once again. So they're saying students with more significant transition needs, with more significant disabilities, each reach the age of majority at the end of the school year in which they turn 22. So it's one more eligibility extension. So I'll give you one point. If my birthday, I was a student receiving services and I turned 21, last year on October 1st, my services would end on October 1st. I would be exited from the Simsbury Public Schools on my 22nd birthday. If I'm the student that has an October 1st birthday this year, I stay through the entire school year. So that is definitely a change in the special education eligibility. The second is around, there is a lot of updates relative to transition. And when I'm talking about transition, I'm.
Was that primarily so they wouldn't, I mean, it's got to be very disruptive to leave in the middle of the, of the school year, is that?
I think that's part of it, Todd. I think it's also has to do with the connectivity of adult services. So you have heard from many of our families before about kind of the drop off of services and opportunities that their children with, young adults with disabilities face in that adult world. And I think that has a, a big chunk to do with it as well. The second kind of category around legislative update and special ed is with transition. And we're talking about transition from the Simsbury Public Schools into post-secondary work world, college, career and whatnot. So the legislation calls for a couple of things. First, for the state to have a transition coordinator, a new position that would kind of be in charge of all transition services in the public school setting. So that's a to be determined about when that person will be hired. The second is it requires each district to have a district coordinator for transition services. We've had one for a number of years. So this is not something of new impact to us. Maureen Casey, who is an occupational therapist, is also denoted as our district transition coordinator. She has an incredible skillset. What it does though additionally require is that this district coordinator have specific training and specific parent communications that need to go from this district coordinator to families relative to transition services. So more on that to come is it is more practically defined in, in practice. But that is another component of this transition legislation. The final is that there are many additional requirements of kind of I's dotted and T's crossed at planning and placement team meetings. So things happen at very prescribed times in very prescribed detail through this legislation. Again, all centered on the transition of our students with disabilities. The third major category in special education is this component of audits. So the state in the past has done random audits on special education services in certain districts. So every once in a while you knew that as a district, you might be chosen for an audit. Previously, this consisted of them pulling some IEPs of students, reviewing them, giving you feedback and whatnot. This legislation calls for a much more developed audit process. Districts will still be randomly selected. It may include things like teacher interviews, staff interviews, parent interviews. And the state can make unannounced site visits and do unannounced IEP reviews. That's what the legislation says. We have heard nothing about how this will practically be implemented. And as we do, we will certainly share updates with the board. So there's a lot that is undefined here. Katie Crisula, as the director of pupil services, is keeping a very close pulse on any developments. And we'll make sure that we get that information back to you as board members.
Sue, do you know, going back to the requirement for a state and district transition coordinator? So is the state's coordinator going to be sort of the point person for all districts?
We don't know yet. All it requires is that a state coordinator be named and a position be created.
So it's interesting, and I, we had the commissioner at a local HASA, a meeting of area superintendents, just talking about the overwhelming amount of legislation and that the result of that is like 950 actions or committees that the state board of education is first up in, in trying to even make a move on any of this stuff to the district. So that's what we're trying to get out is a little bit of the volume and a little bit of the man, mandates and the lack of resource even from, well, not even funding, the, the, the lack of positions even at the state level to support, truly support any of this in a reasonable timeframe. So it's just.
And it's all supposed to be effective as of?
Very.
Various states.
Various states.
But in the next year?
It.
This one is.
Eligibility starts now.
Starts now.
Transition, it's supposed to kind of start, the ball start rolling after July 1st. Audits after July 1st, but know with a pinpoint date of all of the boxes must be checked by X date. So.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
So Neil had mentioned the changes in kindergarten eligibility. So this one begins next July, July of 2024. So students must have turned five on or before September 1st. So our current practice is that our students, in order to be kindergarten eligible, must be five on or before January 1st. This legislation also denotes that parents can ask for exception requests in writing. Like, hey, please, I think that my student, my child should be K eligible and here's why. It also, this legislation requires that staff conduct an assessment to determine if a student is developmentally appropriate. We don't know what that assessment would look like. We are trying to keep a pulse on whether or not there would be a state-defined assessment. So there could be some consistency across school districts. It is a major to be determined. And we just don't have those answers yet, but as they become clear, we will certainly share. So if this was this year, you know, Neil shared a little bit about that. We have about 45 students in this year's cohort that would be impacted, about 16% of our students. If this legislation were to be enacted in July of 2023 versus July of 2024. Is.
The number ended up at 48. So instead of 275 students, if 48 had not been able to go to kindergarten this year, you would have been more like an incoming kindergarten of 227.
What's the problem they're trying to fix with this?
The wide range of current students that are kindergarten eligible. Because you can have anywhere from four-year-olds to six-year-olds. And there is quite a developmental spectrum of kindergarten classes depending upon that eligibility currently. So I think they're trying to decrease the potential developmental spectrum or gaps that can be currently actualized in a K classroom.
And aren't most states, yeah, so I like, if you're moving from state to state, it can, I think.
Theoretically, it, it makes sense, but you create bad policy by then giving in and out.
Yeah.
Right.
Which depending on where your community is, socioeconomic backgrounds of people, there are various reasons why people feel at a certain point in time, they need to send their kid to kindergarten or keep their kindergarten student back. So as you can imagine, across districts in the meeting I was in, the dialogue is very, very different. And early indications back from the state after this meeting, I mean, we were already prepared for this board meeting prior to that meeting, are, is that the state is not going to provide a universal screen tool. So it's, it's really going to be.
To each district?
Or, you know what I mean? We'll see. I mean, I, we'll, we'll come back and we'll provide more information to the board on that. But it can really create some dilemmas moving forward for communities.
Are any, then, are any, I'm sorry, are there any rules on the, on the flip side saying you, you can't hold the student back more than one year? Like, I mean, you can't be older than seven to get into kindergarten? I, it, it sounds like a silly question, but it's just.
So there is something out there.
So, yes.
That's not the problem. The problem is the, is the young age. I mean, when you talk about the educators, it's the behaviors, it's the, you know, emotional development of, of kids that are very young. And just like Sue said, the, the wide spectrum of what the teacher is expected to manage in that classroom.
I, I totally understand that, that. I, now I just start thinking on the other side, you know, how long can you hold someone that, but it sounds like there is.
You have to.
Everybody knew but me.
Right. When the child turns seven, you have to denote what your wishes are. So you're going to send, you're going to find an alternative way to educate, might homeschool.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so we will keep a close eye. It's a very hot topic among my assistant superintendent.
I'm curious if, how the preschools feel about this because now they're holding these kids for another year. Like space considerations, but space can, some of them don't have room to add another classroom or, you know, I, I, that's have they been brought into the conversation?
Some just don't have spaces. We've had very informal conversations with some local preschools. So depending, they might not be bringing in newer families or newer students into their space because they might not have space or they might not have the open seats.
I'm thinking our, our own preschool that's got 100 kids in it.
Yeah, we don't have capacity.
Right. And that's, that's a problem for parents seeking preschool as well.
It's the opposite conversation we had when we went to full day kindergarten where we were pulling people out of.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
That's true.
Right.
Evened out over time, you know?
So it does, it's a short-term problem.
It's a short-term, but it's.
Right.
But it's a, but it's a thing.
So.
It's a thing.
Something that we're watching very, very closely and we'll update you accordingly. Other updates, I had mentioned, most of these I think at our last board of ed meeting, but there is also a legislative mandate to incorporate play-based learning into your curriculum, starting in kindergarten. We already do that um in K and one, but it's something that's suggested to be considered through elementary. So again, there are more defining discussions that are happening at the state level. We actually, um there's a kind of some roundtable conversations about what do we really mean about play-based learning? What does this look like developmentally appropriate through the elementary grades? And we have some of our um language arts consultants and math coaches involved in those upcoming discussions. So more on that. Uh I shared with you that, starting with the class of twenty twenty-five, the FAFSA form will be a requirement for uh families to complete as a graduation requirement. There's also a waiver process. So we're talking through what that might look like. Uh financial literacy, which the curriculum committee said, do not get rid of that requirement. That was great foresight because it's now a point-five requirement. So we have the curriculum. This actually, schedule-wise, I think if Ken was here, he would share it as well. It it helps to balance out because you typically have a uh semester course choice that could go opposite of financial literacy. And again, we already have the curriculum. So some districts are scrambling to develop, we already have. And uh what it will require is an eventual update to our graduation credit policy because right now it says a point-two-five and that will need to be changed to a point-five. So we will bring those um recommendations to curriculum committee initially and then here to the board as far as what that might look like.
And that's effective cla- the juniors or?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, okay, so not till freshmen?
It's the current, the current freshmen that usually don't start taking financial literacy until junior year, so we have some time on that one. And then finally, the mastery-based learning requirement, which we define as capstone, has gone from what was required for graduation to now optional. So we had an initial discussion in Curriculum Council in September and we will be coming back to that discussion this month. Um I think our meeting's on the nineteenth.
Other questions?
Oh.
On the financial literacy, you're saying currently we're point-two-five and it's going to fi- point-five. So would you be looking to the state to give the additional? Or is someone internally working on how we would?
We have it. We have the curriculum. Um we always try to fit in more than um is that we have time for. So it's not like we're scrambling to fill in another kind of quarter. We can go deeper in our current units of study, uh maybe a little bit broader, but more deeper than broader. So we're we're not concerned there.
I also think a lot of the financial literacy classes that people take are half a credit anyways. I know a lot of people that do that just because they think it's kind of not worth it to just take a quarter-year class.
Yep. We have a pretty popular course in the business department called Personal Finance that fulfills this requirement. And that would be, and tha- and then if you take the point-two-five, you kind of get the best nine weeks of personal finance.
Okay.
That's just how it works.
When will we look to roll that out? Are you gonna wait sooner or later or just?
So it's, again, it's not a rec- we have a couple of years to roll out, so we will start a communication.
Okay.
Right? But one of the first things that will have to happen is a slight adjustment in your graduation credit requirement policy.
Policy.
Because it currently is at point-two-five.
Gotcha.
So we have time to change, we have time to communicate. Um you know, it wouldn't necessarily impact those kids signing up now for financial literacy because they don't have that requirement of point-five.
Right.
It'll be kind of two years out from now, this year's current freshman.
Okay.
Did we change other graduation requirements because we knew the capstone was gonna be a requirement? So then with it not being a requirement, are we have, we have to fill that back in?
So Todd, what we did do, it was already al- always at twenty-five. And last year, the board uh voted to create some more flexibilities.
Right.
So we did a a very close analysis of what districts were doing across the state. And we found that, for example, it was mentioned here, uh math, for example, we had required four. We were an outlier, outlier. The majority of districts required three. So we changed the amount of flexibility. We still had to say that students had to complete twenty-five credits in order to graduate. But that's how we created some more flexibility to um give students some more choice and some more room. What I'm sharing is now that capstone is optional, we have to discuss, um I I would say first at curriculum council or curriculum committee, whether or not we want to say remains as a required credit or as an optional credit.
Right.
Or even look at other areas, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Neil.
Okay.
Teacher eval.
So major change um coming for um the way teachers are gonna be evaluated. The last major shift um was about a decade ago where they tried to make the process, I would describe it as a little more scientific with scores and so that you could see on the second bullet that there, what we are required to do now is to rate teachers on a number of scales of the standards, uh do they, do they uh profile as exemplary proficient? Uh exempl- we use the term accomplished, exemplary accomplished, developing or below standard. Um for us, we use the word emerging, I believe. So, and I can tell you across the state, teachers almost universally dislike being ranked like that. So this is a major change at the legislative level to say revamp the system. Um using more mul- uh multiple indicators of student learning growth. These were often based on fairly narrow um test score type of measurements um for one, one portion of the evaluation. And then during COVID, they'd changed to a lot more of like social-emotional goals. And so they're trying to create like a balance of that. Um they do, the good news is that the way all of this is written is it's to give more local control of teacher evaluation. Um um however, they've given scant guidance of what they're really, what a plan would really look like. So the S, the that's SBE, State Department of Ed, is supposed to adopt, SDE is supposed to adopt a model program. And right now, they have not tipped a hand at all on what a model program would look like. So we're on a little bit of a wait-and-see on that. In theory, every district is supposed to develop a new program and implement it by next fall. That, to me, is extraordinarily ambitious. And um one of the possibilities is to just wait for whatever the state program is and say, we're gonna do that for a year, whatever it is, and buy ourselves some time to create Simsberry's own version of what it wants to do. Because I don't want to take us down a path, um because that would involve our professional development and evaluation committee, our administrative council, go start writing a new plan that's not gonna necessarily meet the guidelines that the state puts out. So it's a big change. It's a lot on districts. Sue and I are headed to two days of training, like at the end of this month, uh and end of October to learn two full days. I will see how I do. That, that's supposed to be the start of of us being trained at this.
And that's with the state?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And now for something completely different, we turn from teacher evaluation to another mandate around uh HVAC systems and indoor air quality. Obviously, you know during COVID, schools, there was a ton of talk about schools and fresh air and the HVAC systems and opening the vents and what, and so now you have the legislature trying to say, how do we codify all of that so that this becomes a mandate that schools have to do those things? Um and I'll start at the bottom with the HVAC inspections. They had passed some legislation a year ago saying that you were gonna have to do an inspection in each of your schools um every five years and that you would have to do it by January first, twenty twenty-four. This piece of legislation actually extends that piece to January of twenty twenty-five. And I think it'll get extended even further because here's what the uh word on the street is about this mandate. They came up with this and a hundred and sixty-nine districts with however many schools, and there aren't anywhere near enough vendors in the state.
And no one can do it.
Do this work. So right now, they're trying to rebound on a plan to potentially, Jason Casey and our new um supervisor of maintenance, Kyle uh Loveland are following what's developing. It may end up some, being something like, okay, twenty twenty-five is Fairfield County's year and twenty twenty-six is Hartford County's year. And that, and develop a schedule that, that's sort of where they think it might go, but nobody knows for sure. Um and then related to that too is the indoor air quality piece where now you're supposed to get an annual indoor air quality report, which is testing basic things like um fresh air. So it's, it's testing for uh carbon is, yeah, CO2, it's testing for temperature, it's testing for humidity. It's trying to see how much airflow is um coming in the building. You would have to do that annually. And then you would have to form, um there's a very formalized program where um like the maintenance people, head custodians lead a a formalized program called Tools for Schools, which is about um making sure that you're paying attention on an annual basis to any improvements that were recommended about air quality. So all of that is um going into place and this one is a mandate that really had no idea the capacity to like actually get this work done in a thousand schools across Connecticut. Like this is um, this one's gonna be uh one we have to keep an eye on. Um they did pass new legislation. There always had been a requirement that you had to have, what they call a minority teacher recruiting plan. They're now uh changing the terminology a little bit about um an educator diversity plan. Having to develop a written plan. We actually went through a workshop, uh six of us last year, um a guy, a set of guided workshops, actually. So we have a really good plan. Um and our re- plan is, our plan is not only about recruitment, but retaining those that we're able to recruit. Um and the new thing that you never had to do before is that by March of twenty twenty-four, you actually have to turn your plan into the state and it's gonna need to be approved. And if they require you to make any revisions to it, that they would suggest revisions for you to complete by May of twenty twenty-four, and then every district has to upload its plans to its website. I should have said that about the air quality stuff too. All of that air quality stuff, once you have your report, has to be loaded to your website.
So they're gonna submit it in March and they're gonna turn it around in time for you to make your revision.
I've heard them say that before.
I'm glad I don't have to make the commentary anymore.
We're all here for you.
And then, and then this is all, once again, uh new legislation tinkering with what has now been about a fifteen or eighteen-year established bullying policies that you're aware of. They're gonna make significant changes again in um twenty twenty-five is when most of this comes into place. And go- going to require that first, the State Department of Ed needs to develop a new school climate model policy and a complaint form for how you take in any kind of bullying complaint. And then districts will be required to use that. Like you're not gonna be.
So one complaint form for all hundred and sixty-nine towns.
Correct, correct. That that is, and then a significant redefinition of um the bullying legislation right now, I mean, i- i- a lot needs to be worked out, but the the definition that went into this piece of legislation talks about um aggressive behavior that leads to power imbalances. So go about defining that and that's gonna be, so that I think they knew how co- this is the first time I've seen bullying legislation that was passed. And whether somebody from the State Department of Ed or from the school climate group said, you need to give us two years. This has all been pushed out till twenty twenty-five. So, but it is gonna get a lot of talk. I think you'll see a lot of this in the news. Um and uh and then, of course, there will be new train. There will be new training requirements for all.
Oh, I'm looking forward to it.
Um and then lastly, I did just want to point out that um one of the things that the legislature does for us is um suggest a lot of mandated trainings that have to happen. So you, you know, like the one that is kind of the cliche is bloodborne pathogens that has to be done every year, right? So there you go. Eh, everybody has to be trained in bloodborne pathogens, even though a thirty-year teacher has now done it thirty times. Um but, and then there are certainly mandated reporter trainings and violence prevention trainings and um the, there were more added this year. Um uh seizure response trainings were added, a second sort of mandated reporter uh through DCF, another thirty-minute course that everybody needs to take, a course around human trafficking and the impact that that. So you're trying to make sure that you comply with these mandated trainings, which obviously are things that you want to comply with and they're important topics and you want to cover them. But you also have a professional development calendar around teaching and learning that has to be paid attention to. And if you use all of the captured time to be doing these kind of mandated trainings, you're gonna, you're gonna run out of time.
Right.
Um so we do use a platform called Safe Schools, which I'm sure many of your human recesses, human resource departments out in the corporate world do it. It's kind of the training where you click the next slide and it and you and unfortunately, it's a lot about compliance and making sure these trainings happen. Our folks are pretty good about getting them done when, you know, usually I will um Cindy and I will assign an hour and fifteen minutes worth of videos and you have the semester to get them done. Like at at some point, when you have your time, you go in and then we rotate those through. But some of these are required, like, no, you can't, it's not a canned training, it's something, and it's an hour and a half long. Like, we had that ha- when the new Title IX requirement came in a few years ago, it was two hours for everybody. And you eh eh and you had to sign off that you had done it. So these can be challenging for our human resources department. They're challenging for a teaching and learning menu to develop. Um and these all come out of legislation that um again, pe- well-intended people who, you know, the understanding of, there's not unlimited time to do these things, so.
I'm just, could you maybe get us a list of all the trainings you have to get, the mandated trainings you do in a year?
I can.
Because that might be something to share with our state legislators who are voting on all of this legislation.
I would be happy to pull together the list.
Thank you.
That's my piece.
Gives you a little flavor, right?
Yeah. It's gonna be a busy couple of years. Um, all right, so now we are back to public audience number two. Aren't we all?
I'm tired from just listening to that. All I can think is a lot of companies lobbyists got their way this year, ambient air monitoring and teaching companies. I'm Lori Boyko from Fifteen Oakers Road. So part two is, again, on the topic of having inclusion inadvertently create an environment of exclusion. To address the topic of the library, when appropriate policies are established upfront, banning doesn't become a topic of conversation. We acquire a limited number of books each year and presumably have a limited budget. So it would seem smarter to carefully select and curate a high-caliber collection. Somehow, our standards have become books with text and pictures with extremely explicit sexual content with relatively no educational value unless the standard for educational value is simply that it's something to read. Simsberry needs to have higher standards than that. Switching gears only slightly, an email was sent to high school staff last week letting them know that tomorrow is National Coming Out Day and providing progress pride flag artwork that the staff could post in support of LGBT students. It was a club email that slipped by and Matt has addressed protocols for emails, but I want to use this as an example. but I wanna use this as an example of how sincere attempts to be inclusive and supportive can potentially be divisive in, in the culture. Not all LGBT students are out or ready to come out. Does promoting Coming Out Day put undue pressure on those students? Not all LGBT students want attention on themselves. Not all students by high school even know whether they are LGBT or heterosexual. To students who are not LGBT, how do they feel when it's Pride Month in June and then LGBT History Month in October and then National Coming Out Day? Did the school celebrate Bisexuality Day on September twenty-third? Will we be celebrating Transgender Day of Remembrance on November twentieth? Or Pansexual Pride Day, December eighth? Or Day of Silence on April fourteenth? Did we celebrate, are we celebrating Intersex Awareness Day on October twenty-sixth? Are we celebrating Italian-American Heritage Month this month? Or Polish-American Heritage Month, which is also October? We're spending so much time and attention celebrating very small groups of students and differentiating them by some category rather than looking at students as individuals with their own unique identities. We need to shift the mindset to celebrating what we may have in common as a whole while looking at individual students as unique human beings instead of members of identity groups.
Thank you.
I wanted to add one more publicly comment, if I'm allowed.
Sure.
And of the board, of the Board of Ed members who have kids in the district, did any of you get, while we were in this meeting, this text? Okay, so did you get a text that you can listen to? Just in case, for those that do. Um, okay. I won't say anything. It is about the PSATs tomorrow, right? But my question is, is that I don't know if all parents get, right? How I signed up for this, Neil, I'm gonna ask you, cause I don't really know. How did I sign up for this? Was it on the power or that, that portal? It was a box? To do it, because I think this was so helpful and so awesome and it's just a little voicemail that you get via text to tell you what's happening or whatever with your kid. And I thought it is a great improvement and good job to whoever included it. I love it, love it. That was it, that was my little PSA.
So if you are not getting those text messages, right?
Jen, I didn't know where that one was going.
Sometimes I can get a little crazy, off-topic, but this wasn't important.
Text message at the board meeting, I don't know.
You didn't get it? I'll see, now you know. You can get it on the website, right?
Is tomorrow Wednesday?
Yes.
Right.
There you go.
Oh, I miss Burke calling.
Yeah, I do miss Burke, I do miss Burke.
I miss Burke's calling, but yes.
Yep.
You gotta close.
All right, everyone.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, and a second, please. And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Done.